Motion to open the meeting.
What's that?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great.
Motion carries.
So, just a quick recap, tonight is a continuation of the LWRP review following last week's meeting. Tonight, we will revisit some questions and answers from last week's chat. We'll review the public hearing or see if there's any additional public comment, additional questions and input, followed by findings, and hopefully move forward from there, you know, complete the LWRP this evening. I'd like to start with conflict of interest. Does anybody have any conflicts of interest they'd like to report?
I do not.
I do not.
I do not.
I do not? Great, thank you. And tonight, we have a quorum of the four of us. Stacy Freed may be joining us later, but at this time, we do have a quorum of the four of us. So, we'd like to proceed. So, I guess for that, if you guys would like to come up, Chris? Alright. So, last Tuesday, was it? We had some nice discussion. Mine's not, I'm sorry. We had some nice discussion about the designs and the progress that we've made in the application and trying to move forward. We had asked for a few things, and I know you had provided it, so I thought I might give you some time at the outset, just to present what you brought forward as part of that discussion.
Okay, great. Start, Chris, here.
Please. Yeah, again, Chris DiMarzo, the owner of 7511, Peter Barres from BME, Craig Jensen, our architect, and our attorney, Chris Nadler, is here. Thanks again for your time today. I have a larger copy, you guys have eight and a half by 11. Is it easier if you have a little larger?
Yeah, I have a couple too, Chris, so.
So, are there two new submissions?
Yes.
Okay.
One was today and one was yesterday. Yesterday was 14 pages, and today was just a page.
Did you submit today's in digital format to the deputy?
Yes, it's right there.
Do you want this?
The second one.
Same thing you have, it's just bigger. It's easier to read.
This came to me? Yes.
Oh, great. Is this the front and the back?
That's the front.
The front, okay.
You want that one larger? That you have?
I'm asking you for the slide.
Good. Okay, so I'm probably going to start with the submission from yesterday.
Okay, that'd be great. And just for the record, the submission is specific to the question as to comparables?
Yeah.
And sizing and scaling of the property versus other things we basically across the canal.
Exactly. So, that's what we try to address. I apologize, the data on the cover show for the meeting of June 7th is correct. There is a little small date in the lower right-hand corner, which is incorrect, because I did this over the weekend and didn't have the benefit of someone else to correct my errors. So, if you turn to the first inside page, first thing, you know, put together, you know, some photos, some which you may have already seen before in prior presentations, of other canal side developments that are historic in other communities, generally along the canal, to try and demonstrate that the development of the canal historically has had structures like this, of sizes like this, in a kind of a overall scale.
What are you doing?
Oh, is that Mindy?
Yes.
I'm expecting that the audio is okay?
Okay, thank you.
Is the camera in the right place?
It was, yeah.
How is it now? Okay?
Yeah.
Is everybody?
Thanks, Dan. Continue now.
So, the first page shows, you know, a few of those communities, Canistota, Town of Wanda, and Lyons. These are just representative samples. They're the ones we could find. You know, they're not to say they're the only ones or the best ones, they're just the ones we could find. And I think you can see it's a combination of, you know, different types of buildings that are kind of rhythm and scale. It's similar to what we're proposing, a lot of two- and three-story buildings. Just general, giving you kind of the general sense of this kind of canal front architecture that exists or existed. A lot of these have been torn down along the canal. The second, the next page, just again, additional examples from places like Jordan, Clyde, and Albion. Again, just trying to demonstrate that, you know, what we're trying to capture here is consistent with, you know, what you might expect to find in some of these places. And, you know, it's hard to understand exactly why it happened in some locations and not others, because then, you know, you turn to the next page, and you see, these are also canal side developments, you know, historic in nature, that, you know, we're not trying to emulate, that we don't think are consistent with the village, but certainly did occur along the canal, in some cases in small places. The one, of course, being, you know, just outside the village of Pittsburgh, which, you know, we're not proposing something like that, but it just shows that things can happen for a variety of reasons. And it's not that it's not historic or not part of, you know, the historic kind of heritage of the canal. It may not be what we want, but these things happen, right? The other ones, I guess, you know, you can, you like or dislike, depending on your view of things. I don't think anyone probably is, you know, kind of like the world likes. So, for that's the kind of character, texture, kind of idea, you know, the height of these buildings and the kind of rhythm of things. The next few pages, what we tried to do was just find some communities along the canal that had a development that was similar in its overall length. Now, again, a lot of these communities have torn down structures along the canal, so some of these are more, you know, what was there than what is there. And in some cases, the canal has even moved, so that the structures are no longer on the canal. So, it kind of creates a little bit of this, you know, disconnect. So, the first one, you know, Medina, this is a little different in the sense that the backs of these structures face the canal. We're trying to actually, you know, front the canal. Most of the examples I showed in the prior pages were more fronting the canal. This is more about the backs of warehouse structures and things. You can see that the distance that I'm, you know, measuring on earth here is, you know, 1,200 feet, 1,230 some feet, and our development is about 1,390 feet, end of building to end of building. If you turn to the next one, again, these are just, you know, representative samples. So, this is in Canistota, New York, and there's a stretch of buildings along the canal here that, you know, are grouped together largely either party wall or very closely spaced, and some have been torn down. There was a photo, actually, I think, of this area in one of the postcards. Again, 1,200 feet versus our 1,390 feet, you know, relatively close.
Craig, if I may stop you on this one.
Sure.
Where is the canal?
Pools Brook, I believe, was the original canal when the buildings were constructed. So, you can see there's the Canal, Canistota Canal Town Museum that's referenced here, and Pools Brook runs through the village of Canistota. I have every reason to believe that was. I tried to do some additional research and figure out where it was rerouted to or how things had changed, but I'm quite confident that that is the canal. At that point in the system, it's starting to connect like all waterways and things, you know, so it's not necessarily the same as on the western side where they were excavating all these new things. Here, they excavated this portion, then it connects to a river or, you know, something else.
So, this was a connector going into the village that just stopped?
Well, I'm not sure about that either.
Good. Fair enough. Fair enough, thank you.
I couldn't get back to you on that.
No, no, quite all right.
But I tried, and I could not sort it out. You know, again, you know, in Seneca Falls, you know, here, there was a canal, but it also joined another waterway. There was like a outpost in one of the lakes, I think, that formed like a... There used to be two parallel waterways in Seneca Falls. One that had a falls and one that had the canal, because the National Women's Hall of Fame, where we're doing some work, which is on this, you know, map, actually was on a parallel waterway that had a, it was like a mill with a, you know, water...
Raceway.
Thank you, alright, exactly, like a mill race that drove power for the, for the mill. It was a city, Seneca Nitty Mill. There were a bunch of other buildings alongside of it that have since been torn down that sort of faced the canal. And then, of course, the other side is where there's a lot of historic structures, you know, backing up to the canal. This one extends actually even beyond this, but this, this one block is 1,500 feet, you know, a little bit longer than what we're talking about here. Then if I go to the next one, you know, this is in Lyons. And so, the canal has been rerouted out of Lyons. So, I drew the path of the canal that used to go right through here, and actually, the Canal Street is just above this former canal bed. I took the map, the drawing off of a plat map, a historic plat map of Lyons, and, you know, traced it off the map and then applied it to here. So, I think it's quite accurate in terms of, you know, where that ran and how these buildings wrapped the entire length of that canal. This one obviously is very long, 1,800 feet, and, you know, that's, there's extensions beyond this, but this was really the central heart of things back when the canal was in that location. And then, the next one, you know, this is not historic, but it still frames the conversation, I think. So, you know, it's not something that we're looking to do. It's not something that we're suggesting is what you're looking for, but just for point of comparison, good or bad, the Department of Public Works and the town of Pittsburgh, you know, what do they call it?
DOT.
DOT, thank you, DOT structures. There's, they're about 1,300 and plenty, just a little bit shorter than, you know, what we'd be doing on the opposite side of the street. So, we will obviously be, you know, hopefully looking at those someday. And then, the last one, you know, what you probably, you know, the most interest, you know, Chain Place. And I measured, you know, from just, I think that last structure, you got Aladdin's, and you got Red Baron Properties, and you got the next one over. Like, there are three buildings all combined there. So, I measured from the edge of that to the edge of, I guess that's labeled seven right there. So, you come up with about 1,350 feet, a straight shot across there, which, you know, again, is pretty close to the 1,390 that, that we are talking about over at Westport. So, then, the next page, you know, I just did an overview, you know, nothing new there, just to kind of show the proximity of these two sites to one another and their relative lengths and sizes, the 1,390 or the 1,350. That was that. Then, the next page. I just took the series of buildings along Chain Place, starting, you know, with, you know, from the, well, I guess it's the west and moving east, and took their measurements. These are all measurements, which I believe to be quite accurate. You know, simply creates that entire long building, not including the former Topath Bike, which is a separate building, but that single structure there. The Aladdin's, Red Baron, and there's a third property there. Those are three buildings. The Red Baron and the Red Baron Properties and the adjacent use are actually party wall buildings. Aladdin's, they do not actually touch, but it's, you're hard pressed to see his face. They actually kind of overlap. So, it's, you know, I think of those three as kind of what we're trying to do, where you've got multiple buildings that form a single structure. So, in our case, you know, Building 1 has maybe four identifiable kind of pieces. This has three identifiable pieces. So, you know, they're 185 feet and, you know, we're 170 feet. So, it's a very similar thing. Now, they're even a little more distinctive than ours, because they've got, you know, some of the gable roofs, and Aladdin's has a big porch. So, they've really kind of created even more maybe definition, because the uses were maybe different originally. But still, you know, I think it's an interesting comparison. And so, then, you...
Sorry, but so, Simply Cricks and Coal Tower, the Flower Mill and the Barn, those are on the one side of the street.
True.
And the other buildings are on the other side of the street, so these don't line up.
That's true. That is true. And so, the overall length is the same, but you're right, there's, in some cases here, there's overlap. You know, I think if you look at the map, Lock 32 probably doesn't overlap much of it all with the Flower Mill, and that doesn't allow overlap with the Topath Bike or the Byrons or the Nutra Brown Coffee Glaze, but in the case of the one... Yeah, the two overlaps are probably the Coal Tower and the Simply Cricks with Aladdin's. Maybe, I think this might be the two. Or we can look at the map and see. But as you go through and look at the length of each of these, you know, some, again, like the big barn that's 220 feet long is really broken down into two kind of identifiable barns, but they're all one contiguous structure, like the kind of thing we are doing. In some cases, you know, they're just a single identifiable structure. But when you do the, you know, kind of shortest or longest or the average, it's interesting. It's just information, but it's interesting to see how kind of similar the results on the two columns are. I did not include the... The great elevator, right? So, I mean, it's definitely an atypical structure. I didn't measure that one. I don't think, you know, we're not proposing like a tower like that. Certainly, it's a nice element, you know, at Chain Place, but I don't think the village necessarily needs another one of those. So, I, you know, I basically just chose eight, the eighth in a row with that one as an exception.
And with that work that you had done, that was mostly in length, but nothing with regards to square footage of the imprint of those buildings, right?
No, no, I didn't do with regard to square footage. I mean, I guess I was using some of the other examples on the postcards at the beginning as kind of the examples for that kind of historic character. And, you know, this is another way to look at it, but admittedly, our development is unique in some respects. It's trying to maintain the kind of character and historic qualities and these types of things in the village, but it's not trying to be Chain Place, it's not trying to be Main Street. It's kind of got elements of different things.
While we're on Chain Place for a moment, one of the questions that I have, and my lack of understanding, is with regards to fire code and how with Chain Place, you have the thoroughfare. You can go from end to end with a fire truck, right? And in the development you're proposing, it's hard, you know, you can't get a truck to go in...
Go out.
Go out. So, how does that control the opposite side of the road comment, for example? Where are you with that? You know, just, can you talk a little bit about fire code and...
Sure. I mean, no, I don't think I need it. With regards to Chain Place, the biggest issue there is it predates the fire code. At the end of the day, those... So, if you were to build Chain Place today, you would have to address the fire lane issue. I mean, and that's, we've just done what they've done about restricting parking and whatnot, but at the end of the day, it's grandfathered. So, with that being said, obviously, with the development and the layout of the Westport Crossing program, we have to conform to the code, current code. And as we talked about last week, the requirement is, in today's code, is you have to provide fire lane access to one complete side of a building, once it gets above 30 feet in height, and being multifamily. There's various checklists, but that's where we're at with this. And thus, that's what placed the fire lane on the railroad side of the project, because on the canal side, we were utilizing within the R5 code the design standard of the village street with the parallel parking, the tree lawn, the sidewalks. So, that's where we focused that accentuating kind of building up, what Craig's been saying, of really creating the canal side to be the front, you know, having the buildings front on the canal and making that be the public realm, for lack of a better term, from basically the front of the village street to the front. But then complying with code, the fire code, on the railroad side.
And the, I guess, just to add a little bit to that, the fire department access is also limited in terms of distance if you can't turn the truck around.
Correct.
So, the advantage that Chain Place has is it has an in and an out.
Right.
So, they don't need to turn around. I'm not sure if they could, they're somewhere, but the amount of space they need to turn a truck like this around is really substantial.
Yeah.
So, we have a loop, so they can do the loop, you know.
Right, because there is, Craig is correct, there is a maximum distance.
150 feet.
It's 150 feet that you can do a dead-end fire.
And would that be the rationale as to why the, there is a road in front of all the buildings until you get to Building 7, because it was required by fire code?
Correct. That's why it's on that road that goes along the railroad side.
Of Building 7.
Of Building 7, and there's the turnaround there.
Let me rephrase, I guess.
Yep.
So, right now, you have a circle between Buildings 1 through 6.
Correct.
It's a minute out.
Would fire code allow that circle to be around 1 through 5?
No, I don't, well, it depends on if we could get a spur that would get as far enough to Building 7.
Right, I think the problem is...
To find spur?
Well, dead-end.
The dead-end spur.
Maybe too long.
Between 5 and 6 to the end of Building 7 would exceed that 150-foot maximum.
Because we know Building 6 is 160 feet, so we're already running out of stuff.
So, that would be, that creates a code violation.
Yeah.
Issue.
Are there code violation solutions? For example, additional hydrants or additional interior mechanisms that you could...
Not generally. The fire marshal is given a lot of latitude in the code to basically... But usually, that latitude is to restrict things further, not to provide...
A relief.
So, for example, you know, if you have more than 200 units on a site, you need two different points of access. You have to be able to process it computer-located. So, we have more than 200 units on this site. The fire marshal could say, "Well, you can't just have a single access on Monroe. You need another access from somewhere else in case their train is coming," or something like that, you know. But we don't have that problem. He could, he could waive that requirement, but it's, I wouldn't like to do that.
Okay. It's good to know some of the restricting factors as to why the site plan is designed as it is relative to the size of the units and the buildings and the placement.
Yeah, yeah, because I would say the fire marshal in 2012 to 2015 was an integral part of the process. It was Kelly Klein at the time. So, she was integral to that.
And they gave us the specs of their trucks and requirements, and it was planned for four-story.
True.
Which, there was four-story, and there's still potentially four-story here. Actually, if you look at the plan, the last plan that we were talking about, I need to correct you if I'm wrong, but I think this is actually the plan for trucks going through and designed.
Oh, that is correct. You can see on there.
The canal.
It's the train templates.
Yeah, there are train templates on there. That's the truck, right? Yeah, yeah.
It's a very small area.
Yeah, okay.
You see how the trucks...
Yeah, that's what this landmark, it shows how they can operate.
Yep, okay.
That they, that they functionally...
Oh, and here as well.
...can get around and navigate the site.
So, is that why there's not as much, say, differentiation in the placement of the buildings in terms of angling as there say is in Chain Place? Because there's not the room to make that happen?
I think, yes, because if we walled the street through the buildings, between the buildings, then I think we would limit our ability to actually provide an outbound street. You know what I'm saying? I mean, I guess you could create a figure eight or something like that, but I think the grades may not allow for that as well.
Correct. And then, the other thing, and I think we have talked about this here one earlier meeting also, what makes this site some different than Chain Place is we're fixed on the depth of the site. In the fact, you have the canal, we want to call it the south side.
Yeah.
And we have the north side. Excuse me, thank you, canal and the north side, the railroad on the south side. So, those dimensions are fixed in both ways. Then, how we, just to go back to how we did this, is then, coming off the railroad, we had the criteria of, okay, what is the fire lane requirement? Plus, what we have to provide for on the surface parking. So, in other words, we come off that property line, that's a fixed dimension, depth of a parking area, the width of a fire lane. We mentioned this last week. You have a bump out where the hydrants are located. Then, we want a meaningful green space from sidewalk to the railroad side of the buildings. So, that struck a line off the railroad of kind of, you could almost say, that's the rear for the railroad side building line. That's as close as the buildings are going to get to the rail because of all those other things we got to provide. Then, we go on the canal side, and you work back from the canal, which was, okay, we want canal side pedestrian ways and navigating that as it relates to top-of-bank elevations and the property line itself. But then, we had very clear direction in the R5 code as to what that street section is to be. Sidewalks on both sides of the street, parallel parking on both sides of the street. The street width is dictated, tree lawn. And then, I was going to say, and then as you come off those sidewalk, tree lawn areas. And then, so that struck a line off the canal. So, that left, you know, whatever that dimension is.
Yeah, then in the middle, so that you understand, one of the driving factors in these buildings is to have the underground parking.
And that's the other thing, yeah.
And so, if you think about underground parking, park two cars and an alleyway in between, it's 20 feet, 20 feet, 20 feet, it's about 60, you get to 65 feet with the width of buildings. And so, the magic number here, the buildings are about 65, 67 feet wide. All that said, we did try to articulate these buildings a little bit, so they're not straight across, right? Doesn't show well on some of these drawings, especially the one I sent today. It's a horrible example, but the buildings do twist as much as we can.
Right.
Hey, and I think, you know, a couple other points to add. One, the other examples that we looked at actually are pretty linear. You know, Chain Place is a little atypical from what you see along the canal in that the buildings are kind of, you know, back and forth a little bit. We do have the clubhouse that projects on the other side of the road, so we're kind of breaking up that way, and there's some little garage structure to the back, which, again, kind of distribute things around a little bit to help kind of create some back-and-forth either side of the road, you know? So, I think that will do it. Our canal front actually is a little bit concave, and Chain Place is a little bit convex, you know? So, you get some movement, I think, but there are a lot of, like you're saying, a lot of constraints that also, you know, you have to...
What about a smaller fire front?
Well, what we're required, and I guess this is part of the discretion of the fire marshal to a degree, but in a way, it isn't. We have to be able to accommodate the largest truck that the local department has. And then, in this case, because we're over 30 feet in height, it is the aerial apparatus, because they've got to be able to get so... And they give us the specifications on the truck, and we're able to run it. So, that's, that's, it's, I would just say, fire marshals have a very strong influence in land planning and site planning.
And, you know, some of them, not to get way off track, some of them are really getting a little bit more attuned with what makes a safe community. I mean, the fire marshal, for a while, Missy Rocher, I don't think she's a fire marshal, but she was the AM bicycleist, and she started, she recognized that safe speeds are also important to safety, and that if you make the roads too wide, benefit the fire truck, they're also going to encourage people to drive too fast, and then the bicycleist is going to be, you know, somewhat at risk. So, she saw a real balance, like, okay, I don't want to protect people in one way and then put them at risk in another way, but that's still the exception, not the rule.
Did we answer your question?
Yeah.
Okay, wait, I'm going to try too much.
No, this is, this is very helpful, in my mind, a little bit, maybe you keyed on it there, Chris, is I want to make sure that we allow you some time to continue through material prepared.
Yeah.
But I do want to not necessarily hold any public comments too long.
Yeah, no, I only have a little more pages here.
Yeah, that'd be great. Yeah, don't feel like you have to speed through it. I just wanted to make sure we, without some questions.
Yeah, so, turning to the page after that little chart. We also keep moving Main Street, because, you know, again, another interesting comparison, not that we're trying to be Main Street, but certainly the character, texture, scale of those buildings is kind of what, you know, another real strong identifier for the village. So, we wanted to kind of look at that. And it's interesting, you know, when you do the math, that the block between, I think it's the Forest at Lincoln and State Street measures 170 feet. And there's a couple of alleys that go between buildings, and otherwise, generally, they're joined together. So, there's, in my view, there's like about nine identifiable buildings along that stretch. They may not be nine uses, but when you look at the architectural styles and kind of how they break, it's about fine. And there's two gaps. And then, if you take Buildings 1 through 3, which kind of is another, you know, block similar to Lincoln... And then if you take buildings one through three, which kind of is another, you know, block similar to Lincoln to State, because it's kind of from the beginning of our development to the kind of large break in the middle where we have kind of a major crossroad, you know, or kind of real distinctive separation, that's also 170 feet. And when you start to kind of identify the different pieces of these structures, there's two gaps and there's about, oh, wait, there's a lot, I misspoke. There's 11 buildings on Main Street and nine on Westport. So, but nevertheless, you know, I think the point being that there is a certain rhythm to both of these. There's, that is, I think, consistent. And I think we were pleased to see that, you know, the relationship there is, I think, one that we can make and, you know, make an argument that is really appropriate. And if we turn to the next page, these are not exactly scaled. I tried to do the best I could, you know, I took these pictures on Saturday, which was a nice day, and I just kind of didn't even stitch them together. I just, you know, placed them one next to the other along, along Main. And then, you know, at a similar scale, you know, those first three buildings at Westport and Porterville, kind of large, great buildings building on the floor. So that's the end of that comparative analysis. And I think what Chris handed out was just a kind of single, one continuous or continuous elevation of all of the buildings as seen from the canal side. You know, clearly it would be a long way to wait to see all of these in one kind of view shot. And I was over at Shane Place on the weekend and you stand at one end and you look down, you can't even see the next building from the land. It's because there's a lot of trees there and things that really, you know, kind of screen the more distant views. And over time, I think, you know, certainly as you experience, you know, Westport, it would probably be similar. Although if you were at the DOT facility, you might get a bigger view. So I don't really have much more than that, unless, Chris.
No, I appreciate it. Good job. So if you have any questions on this, we're happy to talk about it, or you want to continue where you were last week, we're happy to follow your direction.
I think it'd be nice to just hear from the public.
Yeah.
And just a quick comment with regards to public comments. We're only following the Q and A, we're not following the chat portion if you happen to be online. And I might ask that we give people here in the room priority, followed by a Q and A, followed by anything that's written.
Now, if you could just mention that the board does not accept public comments by Facebook or other social media venues.
Exactly what she said, nothing by Facebook or any social media other than the Q and A of tonight's call. So with that, is there any member of the public who has comment that is here tonight? And if you do, just state your name and your residence.
Sure, I'll make a comment. Can I ask a open public hearing?
I'm sorry, what's that?
Can I ask a open public hearing?
My apologies, the public hearing never closed, it was open last week, so we're just extending it. I suppose we can make a motion to continue it as per last week, but I don't think it's necessary. Nope.
Well, council wants it, we can certainly make a motion to continue it.
All right, motion to continue the public hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 One.
Motion carries.
Perfect.
Sorry, I'm wrong. Name and address, is that?
Please.
Okay, so Dave McEo, 28, Washington Ave. And my comment is kind of just on a broader scale, just to, just my comment on this project overall and just a suggestion to the board. I know, you know, you all were not on the board when this thing originally kicked off. When did you guys first start, 2010?
This is not a question and answer period for the board. They're here to entertain your public comments, so if you have a comment.
Okay, thanks, I got it.
Yep.
So let's say 2010, put it in context, I gotta, my oldest son's going to be 21 next month. So it was the first grade, second grade when this thing started. So it's been a disaster from the start with this village, how it's been handled. And I've seen my taxes, I just paid them 1350 yesterday. I think around the time it started was about $500. And you could look at the budget over the years and say that, yeah, the litigation is a huge reason my taxes are what they are today. But more than that, the reality is, the people who have been whining about this project since the beginning, if this thing had been built years ago, they would have forgotten all about their complaints, just like the folks who had a problem with the library before the library was built. Everybody loves the, loves the library now. So everybody has their little comment about how they would build something. And when you start listening to every single comment, this thing gets nowhere, which is why we're here today. We're going, I come to this meeting, I haven't been to one of these in a while, and I'm like, is, are we at square one? Well, I could do a proposal here. And so my suggestion to the board, especially the folks who are newer to this board, is try to really think about representing the village and get this done. Don't swabble about, hey, can you move the light posts two feet over type of stuff. Focus on working with these guys sitting in front of you. Get this project done so we can move beyond it, not have any more litigation. And instead of looking at a dirt tract up there, I can actually look at something that, you know what? Hey, maybe my wife and I would move into that place when our kids are gone and a young family could move in our place. Or better yet, young people who can't afford a house in the village could start off by living in one of these apartments and have all the benefits that we all have of owning a home in this place. And that could be their starter. So that's it, in short, get it done. Thank you.
Appreciate your comments. Anybody else here tonight that has public comment? Thanks again. Moving on to question and answer.
Live showing on the screen would be very valuable. That's from Art Pierce. And then I just have one that was sent today via email. And it says, stop development of 75 Monroe Ave.
Yeah.
There's no name, just an email address, and that's all.
Should we have the record show the email that it comes from, or?
Yeah, it's private information, so you probably don't need to publicize it, but it'll be in the official record.
Okay, great.
We can do that.
Okay. And then, any other comments, either in the Q and A or receive via email to Dorothea, the clerk?
Um, no, if anybody wants to speak, they can raise their hand.
Okay. Just a quick comment to Art's request for live showing on the screen. Regrettably, we don't have that capability in an easy way that is conducive to conversation. It is posted online and I may try to, moving forward, offer a little bit better comment where in the meeting packets what we're talking about is located. Specifically, the most recent conversation that we had was at the very end of the updated packet that is found on the calendar. If you click on our calendar tonight and click on our meeting, it is the last packet and it's the very end of that packet. There's about 15 pages that were provided.
I do have my hand raised.
Okay.
It looks like Art Pierce did send an email today. I never received it.
You might have sent it to Dorothea instead of yourself, Kristin?
Possible.
Could you send to Art your email in the chat?
Yes, I'm going to allow him to talk.
Okay, great, thank you.
Mr. Pierce?
Can you hear me?
Fine, yes, let me turn this up a little bit.
Hello?
Okay, we can hear you.
All right, thank you very much. Yes, I sent the email later today to the Dorothea's address and then the Pittsburgh Village email address, as well as the chairman marshals.
Would you like to read that into the record, or would you like us to simply review the fact, Mr. Pierce?
Um, it's more a couple of questions and comments on a number of the exhibits. So it'd probably be easier if the board saw that and read it right there. It wasn't a narrative by any means. But it lent to the thing, it showed a couple of local developments, one in South Clinton and near Ford Street Bridge on the Genesee River, as well as the development in Fairport on the canal. So it gave a couple of pictures, both aerial with giving a sense of scale as well as street views, so the board.
All right, you cut out, are you still there?
I am. Hello?
Hello, yep, you just mentioned the street views of the Fairport development.
Yes, that, and then I made comment too about, I think that building one and building two is, should have more of a gable look. As it fronts Monroe Avenue, reflecting more, reflecting more accurately, the look of Main Street and the gable roofs as you look head on and representative of the number of structures very close to the development of 75 Monroe on Monroe Avenue. At this point, it looks very boxy, if you will, along the canal frontage, but along the, well, also along the Monroe Avenue, looking due west, if you will, at the front of the building. Yeah, but the front of the building on the frontage of Monroe Avenue.
Thank you, anything else?
I think that sums it up. There might be a couple more comments with embedded in that email, but that sums up the big picture.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you.
And does any board member have additional comments they want to share at this time? I just wanted, I just wanted to make a quick comment with regards to time and progress. And that is, I've been on the board here for roughly two years, two and a half. I've been participating in the redevelopment redesign and many conversations with the developer architects and engineers. And I just want to say that where we are today, through all of it, we've made amazing progress. And I just want to extend some significant respect to the effort that everybody's put in to arrive at where we are today. Right? I think we are working towards a solution.
Thank you for your time.
Okay. So Q and A comment? Yeah, you are. No, well, I think I'd like to leave it open just a little bit longer to allow the board to continue to ask questions. Should the public have any comments subsequent to those questions? And then close it before we get into our findings. So with that, members of the board, would you have any additional questions before we close the presentation and Q and A portion for the afternoon? This is the time to air your questions.
While you think about that, can I just say one thing in response to Art's, Mr. Pierce's?
Yes.
I mean, I heard his concern about the view of the development from Monroe. And I guess he may be aware of this and you may be as well, but we do have a gable, thank you. So we do have, I think, a decent sized gable facing out towards Monroe. So as you look west at the development and you see kind of that first building from Monroe, you see a decent sized gable, I think is very much in scale with, you know, the kind of gables that you would find in the village on course of structure. So.
And he's referring to the gable that's shown on your.
That's the February submission.
Okay, but this one says October 27, 21. Is it the same as the February submission, the one that shows east and west elevation?
I'm sorry, that's the October submission, that's October submission.
Okay.
The front page is dated November.
Right, but the page at the bottom of this page is October 27, 21. And it's building one, east and west elevation.
Correct, thank you.
Yeah.
So that, you know, people who are trying to follow along their own documents know what I'm looking at.
Yeah.
Thank you.
The point being that there is a gable there that I think will hopefully satisfy Mr. Pierce that, you know, we're trying to make that kind of statement on that. And that is, I think, consistent with the kind of thing he's looking for that. We agree, representing the village and should represent here.
So one question that I had had with respect to building seven and building two. So in building seven, given the length of that building, we had talked about trying to break it up. And in this instance, it actually feels that you broke that building up more along the vertical than you really had in any prior building. Had there been any consideration at all to doing a similar facade or building development closer to the Monroe portion and leaving some of the more static design elements towards a little farther from the Monroe? Is that anything that had been thought of, or just?
When we, quite a while ago, as we were developing the first building with the historical review board or. HPV, thank you. We had a little bit more going on in building one than we have now. And we recognized that if we repeated that for all of these various structures, that the overall development would get too busy. You know, there'd just be too much going on. So we kind of scaled back and said, we don't need to do everything, we don't need to create all the variety in one building, but save some of it for future buildings and create a pace that's a little bit more appropriate, you know, for the overall size of the site. And then I guess, you know, additional comments have obviously come, influenced us further with building two, you know, kind of making half that building into one building, just to simplify things and make it, again. We realized that too much variety was not variety, actually having some, you know, I think we talked about that, right? If everything is so varied, it just becomes noise at some point. But whether the kind of cadence or rhythms in building seven are more appropriate to be applied somewhere else, you know, you could certainly have that conversation. And I don't think we're opposed to the idea that, you know, could building one or building six have an additional facade kind of inserted to it to give one a little quicker rhythm somewhere? I think that would be fine. It's really hard to know. It does become subjective at some point. I think to change the building two, we're smart. I think having something like building seven also is smart. But is there another variation we can look at from one or six or someone else? There's always this.
Okay. I wanted to go to parking. Does anybody object to that? No? Okay. So embedded in the LWRP, there's in fact a lot of discussion about parking, surprisingly, rather than site plan, right? So with regards to parking, to what degree is the surface bound spots, or how many, are dedicated to public parking versus private parking? And of the public parking, to what degree will there be controls as to the length of time or the stay that anyone may be in that area to enjoy the canal amenities that you may provide?
Let me try and answer that, we can clean my mess up.
I have a couple of ideas, but you better take the lead.
Excuse me. When we set out for parking, again, we own and operate over 2,000 multifamily units in greater Rochester. So we have a real good idea of how many units, how many parking spots per unit we need. And it changes in the type of unit, townhome or a flat, you know, one bedroom, two bedrooms. I don't know the numbers exactly, but when we figured out the parking, again, one of the key components was how many parking, how much parking can we fit under the buildings? When CJAS grabbed the plans, they, they put much more parking under the buildings than we originally had. And so again, years ago, one of the big keys was that, you know, driving by, people didn't want to see parking lots. They were okay with buildings and as much street, you know, parallel parking as possible. Long story short, we came up with a ratio that worked for the apartments. We added a little for the restaurant and we added a little for the public realm. We added a little for the restaurant and we added a little for the public realm. And that's where we came up with the parking numbers. The exact details, I don't answer, I don't know, but in general, that's how we came up with it. I think there's, and I think it works.
The only thing I would add is the site, the site plan that you do have, which is drawing 224002, that was the amended site plan application of November 2021. Note number five of the site notes breaks, breaks it down. There's two tables there. The first table is how the parking demand was calculated, which Chris just laid out. And it was three components: apartment demand plus visitor demand to the apartments, allocation for a food or restaurant use, and then there is an identified, well, it's labeled here as waterfront uses, in other words, public.
Could you share with us those?
Sure. So the apartment building, or the apartments were parked at, for the residents, at 1.5 spaces per unit. Plus visitors parking at half a space for one-third of the units. And this is, so yeah, and it's spelled out here. Long story short, what we came up with is for 150 residential units, parking demand is 250 spaces. So that's for residents and visitors to the residents.
And could you explain just briefly, the calculation you mentioned was 0.5 for a third?
Yes.
So that's suggesting that one-sixth of the time, no, one-sixth of the units at any given time have one visitor?
Yeah. Yes.
Is that, so is this a standard formula? Is this what you're experiencing in other properties? How do we arrive at?
So sure. First of all, if you go back to the R5 code, and this is very commonplace for a unique code like that, they basic, there's no specified ratios. It's like, well, based on the use, you kind of figure it out. So what we did, though, in doing this was, just like Chris said, taking decades of experience operating 2,000-plus units, what is their parking demand? As an owner, if they're not providing parking to their tenants, they hear about it. So we went on a lot of, what we're going to say, real-time information. And then we cross-referenced it to the ITE Institute of Transportation Engineers parking studies. It's, in other words, does 1.5 spaces per apartment unit make sense? And it does, okay? Then the restaurant, we parked at one space per three seats. Again, we brought, we took that rate out of the ITE...
Okay.
Code.
And how many, again, seats in the restaurant are there?
As the special use permit approves, 125 seats. So we use that as the maximum, you know? And so that came up requiring 42 parking spaces for the restaurant. And then the waterfront uses was something that, it was based on, nothing really empirical per se. And so we allocated 10 spaces of people that may drive down there because they want to put a kayak in at the dock or whatever. But it was independent of the restaurant use, independent of visitor spaces. So the point being is, we come up with 302 spaces as a demand. And that's been consistent number or ratios since 2012. The parking on the amended site plan submitted provides 322 spaces. So we're actually providing 20 additional spaces than that calculation lays out. So that could be allocated.
Pause for just a minute. I had 250 for the apartments and visitors, 42 for the restaurant, and 10 for the public?
Yes.
That's 302?
Two.
302. And you said the prior site plan had approval for 300 and?
No, no, the amended, that is, those were the ratios that were used. Obviously, the number of spaces for the apartments units changed because the number of units has dropped from 167 to 150, but we applied the same ratios.
150 or 155?
150.
Yeah, it's 150.
But the important thing, the amended site plan submitted in November, that's before you, proposes 322 spaces. And that is because, as Chris identified, they were able, CJF was able to pick up additional spaces in the garages. So we've actually increased what you could say, allocated visitors face, public space, whatever. We've increased that number.
Susan, you had a question?
Well, I did. I'm just looking at the TYLND, we have a report that indicates 317 spaces for the amended site plan. That's on page 14.
And we did point that out to Mr. Burton, that that is, that that is an error, that we showed him the total of 322.
So let the record show, we're amending the number of spaces, parking spaces, from 317 to 322. And that was on page four of TYLND's report?
Page 14.
Page 14.
You can't really amend their report?
Okay.
They're going to have to amend their report.
Right, very good.
So all that did was increase the surface, the above-ground parking?
Not necessarily.
From 97 to 102.
Well, it didn't increase, but Jim maybe just didn't count some spaces for some reason.
Are you talking about Jim's report?
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Right, yeah, because if you look on page, it's actually, it's page four. It's page, the verticals, the floor. The underground parking on the final site plan was from 162 to 190. So there's an add of 28 spaces. So that, that's just as Chris pointed out, was that's where the pickup was.
Okay, I had questions about that.
I'll just add one thing too, that maybe will help, although I'm not sure what the final decision will be from Chris on how to regulate the parking, and I guess he can speak to that. But the good thing, I think, is that the buildings as designed, the upper levels of those buildings, if you're not parking underneath the buildings, you're going to want to park on the railroad side because that's providing the direct access to the entrances to those buildings and access the upper floors. So the railroad side is going to be preferred by the residents, which is going to leave the canal side hopefully preferred by visitors. You know what I'm saying? Who would just want to visit the canal and everything? I think it will work that way. How you regulate it, maybe, you know, lends us to you.
Just so that you understand, if you didn't, the, and there are two entrances on the railroad side that are actually the common stairwells. So that goes to his point, that people may want to, and the elevators, so that they may induce people to park on the railroad side.
Unless you live on the first floor, you're going to probably want to be on the outside because it's going to be more convenient to get in.
If you don't park underneath the building.
That's correct.
Most, that's people's first choice, the railroad first.
Staying on that topic for just a minute. Susan, did you have additional comments? So one of the comments in the LWRP talks a little bit about entrance side or to the canal. So the, from the canal, you have access points into the building. And I know in many of these drawings, there are in fact entrances to the different units.
That's correct, yeah.
Do the majority of first-floor canal-side apartments have entrances on the canal side?
Yes, either entrances, and I guess we'd have to go through and look how many of them are entrances and how many of them are doors to balconies or porches that don't provide a direct link down to the walkway, you know what I'm saying? So we can do it either way. We can either provide the entrance there or we can provide just a door to a balcony or a porch, kind of like you have a house that has the porch facing front, but your entrance is on the side of the house sometimes, you know? So there's that option.
But it could be, again, I'm just trying to look through these. Some of them seem to have porch structures, but again, I can't quite tell if it's actually a, would walk down.
Many of them have direct access. I couldn't tell you how many. But we could actually, there's probably no reason why almost all of them couldn't, I just...
Couldn't have immediate access to the canal side through that.
Right, which would be ideal. I mean, we want to encourage people to basically be able to be there and not have to go around the building to get down to the canal. So that's the intent.
This may also be a good time to just talk a little bit about green space, public amenities, and the interaction between the LWRP and the goals that are stated in that document relative to the R5 code. So we've got a site plan that, you know, got approval using the R5 code and the limitations and the structures, you know, embedded within it, and taking advantage of, not advantage, but, you know, working within those goals and parameters of the R5 code. One of them, you've mentioned streetscape, you also mentioned frontage, right? And distance from the road. Well, one of the challenges, I think, that the LWRP has is it's a conflicting request. It's asking for canal-side green space, but then the R5 code is basically scaling it, putting the road out there and putting the green space closer to the buildings, right? To me, I don't know if there's any other comment, I find that incredibly challenging and knowing that we will also be reviewing the site plan and that there is flexibility within the site plan that may call for flexibility, right? I recognize that the application you have before us is true to the R5 code. But I also want to recognize that the LWRP is kind of requesting something slightly different. And so as a board, if we can communicate appropriately with you how some of that flexibility may be able to provide greater public amenity or green space closer to the canals, those are things that can often, in this weighing station, which is the LWRP, give us opportunities to balance those different forces so that we can get forward, right? And go forward.
I still have a question?
No. No, but do you have a response?
I mean, I can talk with you about it, but keep going.
Well, I suppose I might ask, any comment on that?
Which part of the LWRP are you talking about, the required?
There is no requirement. It's just...
Green space on the canal side?
There is no requirement. It is a subjective end or policy. There are words embedded in the document that are asking for things that may have greater standing with our board than the specific requirements of the R5 code as to where the street is placed.
Man, I think, in general, I think it's going to work well here because having, the public realm can be two sides of the street. One side is the canal, one side is the sidewalk that accesses these structures. If I'm sitting on my porch, you know, depending on the activity level of the canal, I may not want to be that close to all the canal-side activities. So having that little buffer of parallel parking in the street might actually be an okay thing. I can watch, you know, what's happening, but I don't necessarily feel like people are, you know, seeing what I'm having for dinner or whatever. So there's a balance, I think. We want the, I think, structures to be really close to the sidewalk on their side of the street because that creates a really nice relationship and makes it kind of villag-y and feels right. But if there's too much activity on that sidewalk, then I think it becomes a distraction. So more of the activity will be on the canal side, which I think is a good thing. So even though it may not be intentional, I think that, that duplicity that exists there, I think is actually going to be a good thing.
As it's been presented?
As it's evolved.
As it is right now.
As it is now.
As it is now.
Whether that's a result of fire code or whatever.
Well, it was something you mentioned earlier, the street location with the locks on both sides, and then how that links up with the canal-side path and paths. The word that was used a lot was, they, the street's considered part of it, the public realm.
Yeah, it's part of it.
And you used the word villag-y, and that was, that was a key theme that you mentioned. I think site planning is a balancing. It's balancing fire code, it's balancing multiple...
We don't, we don't have control of fire code. We do have some possibility with our fire code.
It is balancing, but, you know, and as you referenced, the R5 code, because they talk a lot about the street being that public realm because they want that street to be inviting, relaxed, to encourage pedestrian and bicycling and things like that, so. So my, I guess my point is, is I don't think you look at them separately. You look at it holistically, from top of egg to the railroad side of the Trelawny area, the canal-side street.
I think I would add that, just like the R5 and the LWRP have some, maybe not competing, but different things, I think the LWRP document itself has multiple options in terms of the streetscape. I think if you look at Section 5, the design principles of the LWRP document, the streetscape that Peter and, you know, previous architects came up with and that CJAS really enhanced even more, I think it really does comply with the design principles in the LWRP documents.
And I think...
You can really chuck it right off.
Yeah, this goes back to the conversation we had in November, December. But the idea of having a development that is complementing, not trying to mimic Chain Place, right? And trying to do that in a way where the public, to the degree that it can interact, even just the residents alone, interact with the canal. With 100-plus restaurant seating, you definitely are going to have, you know, people moving in and out quite frequently and hopefully, frankly, hopefully there's more than 10 spots that are required for the public, you know, to be there, right? Beyond just the restaurant use. And one other question, with regards to the pool and the clubhouse. We talked last time a little bit about how, in a way, that's a private interaction with the canal at that point, and the walkway is sort of coming around it. What was the motivation there of having, and the restaurant's in the clubhouse, is that correct?
Correct.
So what was the motivation there of having the clubhouse and the pool be as close in proximity to the canal and having the public kind of thoroughfare go behind rather than in front? And stay sort of linear to the canal, the way the public interacts with that space?
But, I mean...
Exhibits.
Exhibits.
Before you start, would you please just describe the document that you're referring to to the people who are watching online from following along?
This is the landscape plan.
So it's, it's BME drawing 2240, and it's titled Exhibit. And the title is the overall site landscape plan, and the drawing is dated December 2021.
Thank you.
You asked for something like this last week, where we attempted to, in yellow, highlight the sidewalks and, and so we did that, you know, as you can see, you come down Monroe Avenue and you continuously can go for a walk all the way down to, let's say, this point, walk down some steps to a gazebo, very, very similar to the gazebo across the street on the canal where they hold the concerts. That type of grade, maybe even not as severe as that. And then multiple ways down to this boardwalk, again, back up to another gazebo, another gazebo over here. And you can literally walk all the way back out.
Okay, so then I'm corrected in this, that there is a direct linear walkway that residents or the community could stay along the canal that in front of the clubhouse, down at that lower elevation?
Correct, correct.
Okay. And that is also accessible to all? It's not just stairs, right?
Where's the ramp?
You guys get oriented.
We're upside down.
Yep, the ramp is right here.
Okay, so the ramp, yeah, there's a little back, there's really, is there any ability to put a ramp accessible?
On the east.
No, because of...
It's too steep?
It's too steep with the rain difference.
Too steep?
Well, I mean...
Is that a firm?
Could you stand one further east?
Right, and I think, for example, it would be nice for the community, particularly bicyclists, right? To the extent that, you know, they're long...
Instead of going down the stairs, instead of going downstairs.
Similar to Chain Place, I wouldn't be surprised if bicycling right in front of the clubhouse would be prohibited. I'm not saying you would do that, but because, you know, people are coming back and forth out of the clubhouse and people have boats and other things, it might not be a bicycling friendly.
Pedestrian-only zone.
But it could be certain...
But I think the idea that they... Accessible route makes this, makes it... Accessible route makes sense, if that could happen, that'd be great.
Right.
Does that answer your question?
It does, it's helpful. While we're on the landscaping plan, you had successfully added some green space. It happened to be very close to Monroe Ave, where relatively speaking, few people would necessarily want to, you know.
True.
Hang out. What were the specific challenges as to having some of that green space be closer to the clubhouse, or more along the primary interaction with the canal there between, say, building two and building five?
You know, I think, again, the previous plan had a building here, which was removed, and some of the comments from the Architecture Review Board, or HPP, was that they wanted a little space between Monroe Avenue and the first building, so that's how they wanted it. And, you know, again, we've been through multiple boards, every time you're in front of someone, they want something different. That's primarily the reason.
And I think that, Peter, correct me if I'm wrong, but the grades as you leave Monroe Ave, you can't take that right-hand turn too quickly.
Because it drops.
Because it drops, you've got to have a little bit of, of distance this way before you get to an elevation, sorry, where you can actually make that right-hand turn. That's why when there was a building there, you still went between the buildings, you didn't pass in front of the building.
Okay, so along the same lines, we have some really nice green space on what would be the entrance side, the, the railroad side, to what degree could those buildings be pushed a little closer to the railroad to have more of that green space come towards the canal? What are the limiting factors there?
I would, I would caution you that.
20 feet?
Well, the key balance.
The other balance is, sitting right here, I can feel the train go by.
Yeah.
It's loud, so you don't want the buildings to be too close, I mean, they are very close to the train.
And, and actually, I would say that if you really look at the distance these buildings are off of the street, I think it's about the right distance, and we can show you, you know, how that relates to other building structures, but if you put them too far back, it's not going to become suburban, but it's not just gonna be as nice.
Yeah.
It will not feel as enclosed or as intimate if you move those buildings back.
Okay.
I would leave them close.
Okay.
So what, what percentage of the space is taken up by footprint of either road
You have those numbers?
It was tiny.
Precisely.
And does that, and that would leave what percentage is green space?
Yeah, so, and I think we verified these, so, there is 93,000 square feet of green space, which is just about, which is just over two acres. So the total site area, that represents just under 30%, 28.9%.
Susan, he's looking at the Times and Report table 1A under green space.
Thank you.
Under the column for amended site plan. I forgot your name, that's why I called you.
Peter. That's okay.
So, Peter, along the same lines, what is the lock coverage?
Well, that would be the lock coverage, because the green space, if you're talking total and previous coverage, so it would be just about 70% because.
And does anybody have, I don't have the R5.
So it's about 5.25 acres.
Yeah, okay. Beyond the streetscape, the dock, which is gonna have some public-private elements to it, or?
Correct.
Right? What additional public amenities beyond the walkway do you envision on this location at the present time?
At the present time?
At the present time. Where do we see public amenities beyond the streetscape, the walkway, and the dock? Suppose you.
Gazebo, benches, trash receptacles, the site plan doesn't show it, but I'm gonna make Chris put some bike racks in, or pop them into it.
There are public restrooms in the clubhouse.
Public restrooms in the clubhouse, okay. I might ask at this time if there's any additional public comment?
Our peer wants to know if he can form his earlier email.
We can forward it to you and we can read it.
Because he has an additional comment.
If you want to, can you send him your email, then we can read it into the record.
While we're waiting on that, Dave, one thing I'd add about the public amenities, and it's a little bit difficult to see on the scale of drawings you have on the site plans, but as Mr. Nadler said, it was very important, and it's incorporated that, that it's on both sides of the sidewalk, the sidewalks, because they're on the railroad side, and the sidewalks that are on the canal side, is that they're just not just sidewalks, that there are pockets bumped out, if you get onto the landscaping, like you can see, pockets bumped out where there would be benches, basically to encourage people to gather, i.e. if you have visitors at your, at your apartment, you can step outside and, and sit outside. Also, and then there was, there'll be detailed, these cut-throughs here, here, and here, so between, I'm sorry, between building one and two, three and four, and five and six, those are going to be hardscaped areas, such that, again, to provide gathering, passive areas, and then on the canal side, as we've mentioned, we, I, we have, I think it's a total of five gazebo structures along the canal side, of varying sites, and it's basically, those gazebos are going to be the intersections of the access that comes down from the street to the canal-side walkway, again, creating that space where, you know, you can do anything from casting a fishing line into the canal, to sitting and having lunch with somebody that you brought, so, so there has been a lot of thought put into, of this just not being a pedestrian circulation, it is encouraging for people to stop, pause, and, and, you know, take in the, the whole setting, including the canal itself.
Okay.
No emails, but he has his hand raised now, so.
Okay. I guess we'll hear Mr. Pierce's comments?
Mr. Pierce? Did you want to speak, Mr. Pierce?
Hello, can you hear me now?
Can you go ahead?
Yes, thank you, just a quick question regarding landscaping, will the existing mature trees on Monroe Avenue remain? These plans tend to indicate that on the landscaping plans, they show new additional plantings, and clearly show existing trees without any intent to remove, in particular the mature ones along Monroe Avenue.
So thank you for your comment, Mr. Pierce. And, sorry, in that, in a similar respect, this isn't a question and answer between the public and the applicant, but his comment is simply one of consistency of trees, and so I can infer from that and ask the question.
Do you have any questions?
Yeah, do you have any questions about trees? So are the, any existing trees on the property planned to remain, or will it be all new plantings?
Trees along Monroe Avenue are intended to be saved, there are some, a couple that will come out because of constructing the entrance with the median as proposed, and also with some of the associated utility work, because there is some psych distance constraints too, because of the trees, but basically, if they're healthy and not diseased, the intent is to save them.
Okay.
Why plant something that's already there?
Staying on trees for a moment, this has to do with viewshed, which is very much embedded in the LWRP. Height of the trees, types of trees, relative to size of the buildings, the addition of four, you know, four stories, you know, little bump-ups in various locations. Assuming the trees all mature in a nice, healthy way, what is that viewshed going to look like from both the canal, the sidewalks along the canal and/or Monroe Avenue? Are these trees taller, shorter than the buildings, or they ex?
Well, I'm in a, I'm not a landscape architect.
Okay.
So.
But he has one on his staff.
But I have, and I stayed at a Holiday Inn Express last night. I do know that we have that information, because I know we presented it back in 2014, 2015, so I would just ask for the discretion that we're able to.
Yep.
Get that to you, because that was.
Every, every tree, every bush is specified.
Right.
Without a doubt.
It would be interesting though, because, you know, I mean, different neighborhoods of different ages are very different, right? So my neighborhood has a lot of 100-year-old trees, right, or thereabouts, because the neighborhood's 100 years old, and now those trees are huge, and what was probably blocking a lot of the houses for many years is now above the houses, you know, and so the canopy is really high, and you see all, as you walk down the street, you see all these houses, and it's really nice. I mean, it probably was nice before, but it was very different, you know, and, and it wasn't planted with ornamental trees that never got very big, so, I mean, I don't know what, what generation you're playing for, saying that's the hard part.
Yeah.
Well, you know, I don't, I think, and your opposite is very good, you will do the right thing.
We specified trees basically along the canal that will grow, I'm not exact, but in the 30-foot range, not to be the oak trees that grow 85 feet, because they get too big over time.
Yeah, they probably do for this site, yeah.
And then on the canal side, as Peter mentioned last week, the trees were more columnar for fire access, so there were different specifications on the railroad side, so that they didn't get as big, but again, it's an attempt to create that, you know, streetscape that you're, that you want to see without overpowering.
Yeah.
But everything's going to be new, and, and we even specified, you know, certain calibers of, we're not going to plant three-inch trees, we're gonna plant three-inch caliber trees.
And for the next 30 years, it's going to be managed by on-site personnel, so, you know, VDW goes through once a year and trims trees up in the village, these are going to be maintained on a weekly, monthly basis, because Chris is gonna, you know, make it look nice in my apartment.
Yeah, clearly you have an invested interest there. I think my question was more along the lines of, would I expect to see, as I come across Monroe Ave, the tops of every single building in a linear fashion, or would I expect to see just pockets here and there above the tree line, or would I see none?
I think it's, it's the second option, because really what the landscaping plan intends to do is break up the massing of the buildings, okay? So in other words, you will, it'll be very unlikely that you're gonna see, coming across Monroe Avenue, a stretch of building from finished ground all the way up to the roof that is not broken up by landscaping, so, and part of that is, and that viewshed is, because of the spacing of the trees, of their canopies, the, the varying heights, that'll even provide context there, so that's part of the landscape design. The landscape design does two things, it does that, and then the second thing it does within the tree line is to create that street canopy feel, so that when you're on the street, you're getting shade from the trees, what we call the classic village-street look, so it's, it's got a few functions in it.
Okay. Any other questions at this time on landscaping?
No.
If I may, it's 7:55, we've been on task here for a little bit, maybe take a break with the idea, again, tonight of a hard stop at 10 o'clock, I think that sounds reasonable, could be earlier. Go from there? Yeah, okay, great.